We did. We did a little bit of covering. The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to our first meeting of the new year, January 5th, 2016. Please note the council is in full attendance. The first item on our agenda is communications, is items from council, and I have one item, but, council, Mr. Alvarez?
I'd like to request, in the near future, if our finance director could give us an update on our debt capacity. There was a presentation done back in 2013, if y'all recall. Ms. Scott, you weren't on council, but very interesting, like to see those numbers updated and see what kind of debt capacity we're at going forward. Thank you.
Have we not done a, that was very thorough, you're correct.
We haven't done this.
We haven't done it? Okay. Because we do talk about debt capacity, like parts of other plans and things, so...
Especially leading up to our CIP presentation, which will either be late March, early April, you know, it'll be a good jumping off point.
Good, good suggestion.
I have two items. First, I'd like to put on a future agenda to talk about bike lanes as we design Red River. We're looking at Ben Wilson, and now we're going to be looking at Red River, so I'd like to put that on a future agenda for discussion. And my second one is to ask, I've had calls from, well, not calls, but contacts from some constituents that live in Tanglewood, and I know that the Woodway subdivision is having some renovation done, and so I would wonder if the staff could tell us a little bit about Tanglewood, because those streets are pretty bad, too, and I know that we're aware of it, but I'd like to hear a little more.
Certainly. Right now, our street improvement plan has Tanglewood subdivision scheduled for 2021. The reason, and the roads there are in disrepair, they need to be rebuilt. The reason they're not sooner on the agenda is the utilities under that roadway also need to be rebuilt, and Tanglewood's a very large, quite a large subdivision. The estimate to replace the utilities is approximately $7.8 million. The estimate to repair the roads is very similar, $7.8 million, so you're at $15.6 million. We don't have the debt capacity currently in our revenue bond, revenue indebtedness, to be able to take on that utility project right now, and as mentioned earlier, finance director in, at the end of 2013, did an analysis and a report that showed in 2021, that revenue, we'd start retiring some revenue bond indebtedness, and we would enable them to have the debt capacity to take care of Tanglewood and some other larger subdivisions that are, so that is the plan.
And with the CIP presentation, with that five-year rolling, you know, '21 will be picked up in that five-year rolling, so you will see Tanglewood in that presentation when we bring it.
That is correct.
See, oh, go ahead.
So, I mean, basically, what you're saying, we wouldn't want to rebuild those streets if we have to go back and dig them up for the utilities, and we, and we don't have the money right now to do the utilities, or if we did, we'd be digging up the streets?
That's correct. I certainly wouldn't recommend rebuilding streets over those, the utilities in that condition. That's correct.
Thank you.
Then, is, in '21, that's the entire neighborhood, right? You're going to do everything?
It is the entire subdivision, yes.
So, utilities, and then a complete rebuild?
That's correct.
Those, those folks, and Ms. Scott is correct, and those folks have been very patient. They are bad. We know it. I wish we could start tomorrow, I know you do, too, but it's a difficult thing, but they have asked before, council, and even your predecessor was asked about it, so...
And just for clarification, utilities would start in '21. The road work would be a few years after that, so...
That doesn't mean we won't keep up with pothole repair in the meantime, right?
We continue to address potholes. If people will call them in, we will, we will address them, and of course, we also have a program whereby we drive by, but we can't be everywhere at once, so the fastest way to get potholes repaired is call them in to the Public Works Department at 361-485-3381, and we will address those.
And we've done some level-up work in that area.
We have, a significant amount of level-up, and of course, it's not, you know, that's a repair job, it's certainly not a rebuild, but it does help with the ride quality.
I submit pothole requests online, and I can just use my phone, and I'll take a picture of the pothole and attach it to your form, and I've noticed, in areas I travel frequently, if I, if I have time to stop and do that, I do notice it gets repaired. Unfortunately, with all the rain, it's, sometimes, you know, the repairs hold up for a while, sometimes they don't, so frustrating for everyone.
We try to address those within 48 hours of being notified of them.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, anything else? If not, I have one item. I'd like to ask council for your permission to remove C3 from the agenda. C3 is the request from the Victoria County Public Health Department, Animal Control Unit, for that additional fee. The CM1, which is, of course, the write-up or description that we receive, as council members explaining that, is not, does not have all the information that I'd like to have, and so I did call the county judge yesterday, and I asked him several questions. One was, had Commissioners Court seen this and made a decision on it? They had not, and he was actually very unfamiliar with it, and so I asked him if he knew, for example, if it applies to domestic animals like cats and dogs, but what about a possum that you trap? And a lady did call me, and I think, Mr. Bocknight, she spoke to you, and a couple of other questions, and he was not sure, so I said, I think that, I'd like to see county commissioners vet that and discuss it. There's also been some, you know, realization that might be some unintended consequences to that whole thing, so they need to rethink it. So, with y'all's permission, we'll just pull it. If the county commissioners and the health department, they approve something, they can send it back to us then, and we'll look at it then. Is that okay?
Sounds great.
Okay. So, and now, if anyone is here to speak on that issue, you're welcome to speak, I didn't want to, but we're not going to vote on it, we're not going to even take it up for discussion tonight. I do not know whether it will come back on a future agenda or not, to be honest with you. It's up to the health department and what the county commissioners decide. Okay?
You might just clarify that the county health department is a county department, not a city department, just for clarification.
Yes, ma'am, make that perfectly clear. That is a county department, run by county employees, and they, obviously, the city is in the county, so they do that function for us. And I even asked the question, I don't want to get too off-topic, but about why we approve fees for our county department, and without a lot of research, I think Thomas may look at it, but it obviously has something to do that we have, the fact that we have ordinance-making ability, and they do not. We can actually regulate a lot more in the city, so that may end up being the answer later, as it's required for us to do it.
That is the right answer. The county doesn't have the authority to pass this kind of fee on their own, so when they're doing this kind of business within the city limits, they pass fees, or we pass fees for them to charge.
Okay. Well, for reference, but yes, it is a county department, so, anyway, so we'll strike C3, and that'll take care of that issue. Anything else in items from council? Okay, seeing none, we'll open up citizens' communication, and this is a time where anyone here that wants to come forward and speak to us on any issue, please come on up to the microphone, give us your name and address for the record, and if you would, out of a courtesy, try to limit your remarks to five minutes, and so we have a clock on the screen for you. So now's the time to come forward if you have anything to discuss. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close citizens' communication, and we have two ordinances we need to approve.
Item C1 is an ordinance amending Sections 21-100, 21-102, and 21-104 of the Victoria City Code by revising regulations pertaining to off-street storage and display and screening fences, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for publication, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date.
Does that move? Second. Motion and a second. This is our second reading, third reading combined. Any questions?
Shall I fix those, the calendar date at the end?
I believe that we're going to fix that for Paul's signature.
We're obviously not in 2015.
Yeah, we'll fix that on the signature version, then.
Any further discussion on C1? And then, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. C2?
C2 is an ordinance providing for the extension of certain boundary limits of the city of Victoria, Texas, and the annexation of certain territory, consisting of approximately 15.01 acres of land, at the request of Victoria Electric Cooperative, adopting a service plan for the territory to be annexed, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for publication, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date.
This item has a public hearing that goes along with it, so we'll open the public hearing on C2 first, so anyone that would like to come forward to speak to this item only, now's the time. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing on C2, and I'll entertain a motion.
Does that move?
Second. Motion and a second. Any questions?
This will be at the intersection of 59 and Hanselman Road?
Yes, sir.
We had a resolution to accept their petition to annex last, Chris, December?
December 15th, that's correct.
It's a voluntary annexation.
Okay. Very good. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. So, consent agenda?
There are three items on the consent agenda that will be approved with a single vote tonight. They are, first, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on December 15th, 2015. Second, a resolution approving the purchase of 260 new carts for recyclables from Waste Quip Toder LLC for their low quote of $16,040, and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase and declaring an effective date. And third, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract for the purchase and installation of playground equipment and pour in place fall zone services for the community center park from fund abounds for the low bid of $149,999.99 and declare an effective date.
I move to adopt.
Second. Motion and a second.
I'd just like to make a comment. I'd like to thank whoever was involved in the design of the playground equipment. I noticed that the shade had been changed a little bit, there were separate tables, and I liked that design.
Very good. Thank you. I'm sure they appreciate that.
Plan to use it, Ms. Scott?
Do what?
Plan to use it?
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Resolution?
E1 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for architectural services and project management for the 2016 community center remodel project with Raleigh McCoy and Associates, and the amount of 12% of projects costs not to exceed $93,020.40 and declare an effective date.
Counsel? Does that move? Second. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I see our parks director there, ready to answer questions.
Will this be the last of the renovations to that facility?
This will complete the facility.
What's, okay.
While you're here, while we're on this, real quick, we used to have an issue with hot water in the kitchen of the dome. Are you familiar, you may not be familiar, is it addressed as to what?
Alex Buskin, he's there, he's over that particular department.
This goes back many years ago.
He's had hot water every time I've been there, but hello.
To answer your question, yes, sir, I do believe that has been addressed. Since I've been in charge of the facility, we have not had that issue in the dome kitchen.
Wasn't it an electric hot water heater, and it was way too small? Was that, I don't remember.
I believe so. I don't, I'm not positive on that. I can look, I can look into it and get you any...
No, no, don't. That's fine. I, I trust it's been addressed. I, it's kind of funny, I was remembering something from over 10 years ago where it was a problem, and I asked, I think, the city manager, we weren't sure, but I trust it's been addressed, so...
As far as I know, we have hot water.
It used to be, anyway. Okay, very good.
If it hasn't been, you'll hear about it soon.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I...
We haven't had any staff, complaints come to staff about the hot water issue, so...
Very good, very good. Ms. Solis, did you have something?
Yes, I noticed that the work is going to be started from May through August, August the 5th is your projected ending date. We have the community center on August the 7th, so I just wanted to make sure y'all get it done.
We will push very hard.
Thank you.
We discussed, that's the lady of sorrows. We discussed that when we talked about, that's why it's important that we get started and get it all lined out.
Okay, because I saw that, and I said, ooh, is that the first weekend? Yeah, okay.
Well, they won't be closed, will it, during construction? It will be completely closed, including the annex?
Yes, sir. Are we still doing the annex, or is it closed? Is it going to be open or not? I don't think so.
They'll be, they'll be working in the annex kitchen during that time period, so it will be closed for a portion of that time. I'm hopeful that we can do that part of the work first, and then hopefully get it back opened up.
Good. Good. Y'all have done a really good job of taking care of that facility, you know, I think back to growing up here, how it was for all those years, and when I go over there now and look at it and realize, wow, it's really nice, the things that have been done. So, you know, it's a good asset for the community, so thank y'all for that.
One more thing, Mayor, I'd appeal to staff to, in next budget, look again, seriously, at adding more parking. I see a lot of parking on that, on the Dura, the gravel area these days, so it would be nice if we could add some more parking.
Oh, just cover the parking, you mean, more?
Asphalt, I guess, yes.
Asphalt, yeah. Out into the grass area.
No further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you.
E2 is a resolution awarding the Berkman Drive diversion sewer, Northside Road annexation Phase 1 project, to Mercer Construction Company for their low bid of $2,086,004, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt.
Second. Okay. Second. Mr. Short, would you tell us what this will do while you're there?
Certainly. This, this, we're going to be rehabilitating an existing 24-inch sanitary sewer line in Berkman Drive, and then extending a new 24-inch sanitary sewer line off of that, over to Loop 463, west along Loop 463, across Spring Creek, and then tie that into the Loop 463 lift station there. What that will effectively do is take all of the wastewater flows that are currently being discharged out of the North Crest area, and divert them over to the West Trunk Main and down the west, down the west side of the city drainage basin. That'll do, that will do two things. That'll free up some capacity in the eastern basin, which is John Stockbauer primarily, for new growth that may, we anticipate will occur along the loop at some point. It will also provide additional capacity for future annexations to the north, along, possibly Northside Road and out that direction.
Okay. How long have you been planning this?
It's been on the planning window for at least 10 years.
Yep. I just, I just want to make point of that, that that's, you know, how much planning we do do, so I've, I remember discussing this in years past. Very good. Is there any other questions, council? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. City manager reports.
Just a recognition for the finance department, and Gilbert and his staff, I don't have a plaque to give him or anything, but I know, he's in shock. But we received our recognition for the certificate of achievement for the excellence in financial reporting, and that's for our audit process. This is the 32nd year, I think, and so, which may, it's just one more point to our transparency and excellent job we're doing in our auditing process, so Gilbert and Andrew and the finance staff are to be recognized for that diligent work, so 32 years is a long time. Thank you for keeping that up, so...
I thought maybe as a tight budget, you were just going to give them a little stick on, on an O in there or something.
I got a letter.
Very good.
Thank you, Gilbert.
Well, actually, when I saw this, and I asked, well, the city manager, I said, what, again? But very good. No, you guys are doing a good job. We, it's appreciated by everyone, so... Okay. F2?
The next one, Scarlett, is appointments to the county health department board.
Mayor and council, the, there's an attached letter in the packet from Lisa Campbell stating that Dr. John McNeil and David Way have missed three consecutive meetings, and according to their bylaws, they will need to be replaced. Dr. McNeil's term expires in April of 2016, and Mr. Way's expires in June of 2017. You all will need to consider appointing a physician and a citizen to fill these two vacancies on the board. There is one application in there from a Mr. Gibson, who could possibly be considered for the citizen position, however, I do not have any physician applications, so I just need to know...
So, we don't need to take action tonight, we just need to, the vote will be at the next meeting?
That's correct. Yeah. If, if you're okay with Mr. Gibson as the citizen appointee, then the resolution would come back with his name, and then a blank for the physician, so...
Well, I have a couple of questions. Who's the current chairman?
That's, I have my question. The vice chairman?
I think that, I think the chairman is Dr. Maggie.
Okay, and they have, he's supposed to appoint a nominating committee? To read the bylaws?
I think that's what it says.
Article 2, Section 4.
And Ms. Campbell's not here tonight, so...
I know in prior, prior years, when we had a different director, names did come recommended from the director, but that's not always the case. Sometimes, there just wasn't anyone out there.
Do we need to go out and encourage people to apply or submit an application?
Well, we could bring it back and put Mr. Gibson on, of course, anyone could present someone else, you know, in other words, put his name on the resolution if y'all want. Anyone's free to bring up anyone else, and of course, also, a physician, same situation.
Type of, what type of physician?
It doesn't matter, it just has to be a physician.
Are we restricted that, can we appoint the same physician if they're, I mean, we've looked at this with other people, too, if there are reasons that they've missed meetings that they might still be willing to serve?
In other words, Dr. McNeil?
Right.
I don't, I don't know, I'm not sure, but do you...
I, I don't know on that.
I would think we could, actually, I don't know, you know, if it's not addressed in these bylaws that were given to us...
Didn't see a limitation on...
I would say we could, if, if that was your desire. Perhaps by, between now and the next meeting, if you guys have a physician in mind, you can just be ready to make that nomination at night, but did we address Mr. Bocknight's question about, are we, did you mean, you expect to get nominations from this committee, as opposed to us just randomly finding somebody?
Right, and that's what it says in their bylaws.
Talking about this Section 4?
Yeah.
Article 4, Section 2. I'm not their attorney, and I don't want to give them legal advice, but it appears to me as though this is in regard to electing the officers on the board, as opposed to appointing board members. That may be a distinction.
Because we're splitting the board between the county and the city.
Right. Well, what the council is considering tonight is appointing a member of the board, and what I think Section 4 is talking about is electing officers of the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
I had another question, that's, I mean, it's their lawyer, too, on the absences. It says, "Commissioners Court shall be notified that the membership position is vacated, and a new appointment must be made."
That appears, again, I...
D is, it's their decision, whether it's Commissioners Court or City Council, as to who should be notified to replace the delinquent member.
Right.
So, they got...
Right there, but it's the decision of the board. We got a letter from the director now. Should we have gotten that letter from the board versus the director? Should the chairman of the board sit there and say, made, the board made the decision, are they no longer a part of the board? Or should we be, you know, who should we be notified from the director, or actually the board themselves?
Well, it's begging a lot of questions.
Yep.
To include, you know, what, what constitutes three consecutive absences, and what were the circumstances, and any other reasons that disqualify these members?
What's the timeframe for making this? We don't have to make this appointment at the next meeting, do we? These two?
Do we meet monthly, or how often? Is it as needed?
It says they meet quarterly. We could...
It's very obvious, we should just put this on the next agenda, so Ms. Campbell can be here.
Yeah, let's, let's wait and get some clarification, and now, is, I want to make sure, though, if there's any action items, is anyone asking Mr. Gush to get clarification on anything, or, before we leave here, what do we, or we just want to put this right back on the next agenda and have Ms. Campbell here?
Mm-hmm.
Good enough?
Right.
Okay. I don't want anybody to come back and expect some interpretations of some of this?
Well, and we'll make sure...
It's not his to interpret, though.
No, we want to make sure Ms. Campbell understands the questions we're being asked.
You'll talk to her, okay.
Are you asking it to be, come back as an agenda item, or is it another city manager report?
Another, another city manager report. Yes, you're, thank you for that clarification. So, at the next meeting, we still will not make a decision, we just need some clarification, and then perhaps at a following meeting, we can make the decision. Okay. Good enough?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, the last one is, in a previous meeting, Donald talked about UBO billing, and Ms. Solis raised some questions about how verbiage on the bill was, so Donald went back and re-looked at that, so he's got an update on what changes he's made after that conversation.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. In front of you, you have a packet with three pages. If you look at the first page, there's a highlighted line called "All Other Charges" for $53.22. This is an actual live bill that we sent out to a customer. After looking at this further, there's, there's no way that one of our customers could look at this bill and determine, from just this bill, what that $53.22 is. The only way that they could figure it out, as it stands right now, is to contact the billing office, or to go onto the customer web portal. If you look at the second page at the top, this is what that customer would see if they looked at the customer web portal. We feel that it's, it's inconvenient and unreasonable to expect our customers to have to go every time to this customer web portal, that they've got that section that says "All Other Charges." So, to help alleviate that, what we're recommending doing is moving some of the spacing around on our bill to give room for more line items. What's happening there is that, as, we only have so many line items, so when it reaches that last line item, if there's more charges, it's just being lumped into one deal. Not only do we want to move some line items down, but we're recommending taking all the individual garbage charges, which includes garbage, brush and bulky fixed, recycle, yard waste fixed, and household hazardous waste, and put those all on one line item. And if you'll turn to page, the final page, this is what that bill would look like if we make those changes. It would detail all that out, get rid of that "All Other Charges" line items in there, make the bill a lot cleaner. If y'all are all in agreement with these changes, I can send this to the developer tomorrow, and it should take about 30 days to have it ready to go. 30 to 60 days to have it ready to go. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have a question, just because I'm just now looking at this, and the $47.47 number just jumps out at me on both of these, but it's a different, one of them's an irrigation meter and one's yard.
Yes, we're going to clean up, we're going to clean up some of the language and make it a little bit more underst, a little bit easier to understand, when some, some customers are, when you just put yard on there, they don't know if it's yard waste, or is that irrigation meter, and in this particular case, that's a 1-inch irrigation meter with a, I don't know how much the consumption was on it at the time, but, well, it's $3,000 is what it is, so... That's what that, that's what that one represents.
So, these two bills are the exact same services?
It's the same, same month, same address, same service, yes, sir.
Water, sewer, okay, so then, irrigation meter, you're breaking that out, and then you added the other couple into the solid waste, and the, okay, okay.
I like it, I, I think it gives you a lot more clarification, and that way, you don't have to have people calling you, or, you know...[1717.04]
I want to be, you know, upfront with you, there, there are still going to be a few bills that just have so many line items, we just can't get everything on there. We're not going to get away from the all, all additional charges or all other charges. There are going to be a few that have those, and, but this should give us probably, say, five or six additional lines if we can squeeze everything enough.
Okay. Who's the vendor, software vendor?
The software vendor is Harris, and they're out of.
They just can't do it?
I'm sorry?
They can't, is this a template? We just can't get it itemized? I like itemized, but.
Spacing issue.
It's a spacing issue. If, if we choose to take, if we choose to move some things out of here, we can.
It's only because you're wanting to just use, send one page.
Right, we're, yes, we're trying to keep it to one page.
You could send two pages.
We could send two, we could send a two-page bill, but that's.
Doubles the printing?
Double the printing. Well, the mail would be about the same, but the postage would be the same, but it's still double the printing, double the paper, just costs a little bit more.
Well, if the customer requests it, well, you can go online and see it.
You can go. They can always go online or call us, but I, you know, we can continue to monitor it, and if it, I really feel that it's going to catch probably 99% of them, but there are going to be the ones who have, you know, maybe it was a bad month, they had a lock charge, NSFV, broken lock charge, who knows what, and all those, you know, there's a lot, or maybe they've even got multiple meters on one account, so that could be, that could be one of those that gets, gets added.
I think this is a good solution.
I think so, too.
The question, you know, we discussed it internally, and now, I do believe you might have some people come back and say we've raised their solid waste rates. All we've done is rolled those three rates into.
That's correct.
Line item. There's been no rate increase, but, so.
And we can address those questions as they come up.
Right. I think these categories make sense, now that I've looked at it and see what you rolled together.
The only thing I could say is maybe take solid waste services and kind of use some, instead of spelling it all out, and then maybe you could put in parentheses, garbage, recycled, you know, with some abbreviations in parentheses. I don't know how far you could go so that they understand that all that's rolled into it. But, I don't, I mean, it's a, it's a great clarification, I think, as it is.
Well, a legend, a set of two-digit acronyms and a legend on another part of it.